All right, thanks. Freddie. This public hearing is called to order at 6:30 on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022 via WebEx. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony with respect to a special permit application to the Board of Standards and Appeals, BSA calendar number 2021-70-BZ for 1206 East 21st Street, Block 7602, Lot 78. A special permit application has been filed with the Board of Standards and Appeals, pursuant to Section 73-622 of the zoning resolution of the City of New York as amended to permit the enlargement of an existing home in an R2 zoning district contrary to the FAR, ZR23-141, the OSR, ZR23-41, and the rear yard, ZR23-47 requirements. If you wish to testify on this issue, please use the WebEx Raise Your Hand function to speak or email your comments and questions to info@cb14brooklyn.com. Comments received during the hearing will be read aloud for the record. Please state clearly for the record your name, address, and organization prior to giving testimony. The first speaker will be the applicant's representative, who is James Goldstein, and Bonnie will be presenting for us tonight. The floor is yours.
Before I start, I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody. And I'm going to pass it to Bonnie Rose, who's my associate in my office, and she'll be presenting this evening. But Happy New Year, and it's good to see you all.
Okay, thank you, Jay, and thank you, Ms. Brown. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you all and to be here tonight. Thank you for giving us a bit of your time. I'm just going to share my screen so that you can follow along with me. And here we go. Okay. So we're here tonight on behalf of Rachan Larafar to present a proposal for the enlargement of a single-family home. The home is located at 1206 East 21st Street, on the west side of East 21st, between avenues J and K. The home is located on a 5,000-square-foot lot in an R2 zoning district. We are seeking waivers of floor area ratio, open space ratio, and rear yard. The existing home is approximately 2,735 square feet of floor area, or .55 FAR. We are proposing to enlarge the home by approximately 50 square feet, up to 2,784 square feet, which is approximately .56 FAR, well within the 1.0 FAR that the Board typically requests. The existing rear yard is 28 feet 6 inches at all levels. We are proposing a rear yard of 20 feet at the first floor and to maintain the 28 feet 6 inches existing at the second floor. There's a 19-foot 2-inch front yard, which we're proposing to maintain. There's also a 7-foot side yard at the northern lot line and a 14-foot 2-inch side yard at the southern lot line, which we're proposing to maintain as well. All really done in order to facilitate the squaring off and enlargement of the first and second floor. The cellar will also be enlarged in order to accommodate the enlarged first floor above. So the cellar will primarily remain open with a laundry room and mechanical space and a bathroom. The first floor, as mentioned, will be squared off and will be enlarged to include a double-height living room, as well as an enlarged kitchen, dining, den area, and a sitting area. The second floor will be enlarged to include two additional bathrooms. There's also an existing attic, which will be reduced to just storage space and crawl space, and that floor area will essentially be redistributed between the first and second floors. And as a result, we will really only have a net increase of approximately 50 square feet, as mentioned. Additionally, the existing home is 33 feet 8 inches. We're actually proposing to reduce it to approximately 28 feet 2 inches, which is about a 5 and 1/2-foot decrease. The perimeter wall height will remain the same at 21 feet 3 inches. And so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Did we have any pre-registered speakers who wanted to put their comments into the record?
I was, but okay.
Also a reminder, I see a lot of people, they do not have their microphones muted. If you can go ahead and mute yourself. Hearing no response for pre-registered speakers on this matter. Were there any board members that wanted to ask a question? I see Glenn Wallen has his hand up. Go ahead, Board Member Glenn Wallen.
Thank you. Am I correct that you're going to be removing the existing garage?
There's actually, so there's actually, it's a good question. There's no garage on the premises. There was one previously, but it was removed between the time that the owner purchased the property and the time of this present application. So there's no garage on the premises.
Okay, well, it's still in Google Maps.
The Google image is a little bit outdated. If you refer to the photographs that we submitted with the application, there's no garage in the rear. So it's just a little bit outdated on the Google Street View.
Thank you.
Next question is from Barton Prasant, Board Member.
Hey there. Actually, I did see that photo and was going to ask about the garage because it's pretty obvious where those cones are, that something used to be there. I guess my question is, if you're only going from a .5 to a .56, I mean, that's pretty rare amongst these applications. It seems like an awful lot of trouble to go to, so it's really just rejigging the configuration of the rooms. And why didn't the owner try to go for more FAR?
So this is really all we need. The home is already over the allowable FAR. The maximum allowed FAR is .5. We're already at .55 in the existing home. So any enlargement would really require the special permit. But to address the first part of the question, it's really just to allow the owner to square off the first and second floors and to enlarge modestly. As mentioned, it's only, as you mentioned, it's only approximately an increase of 50 square feet. So again, just any increase would require that special permit.
Okay, I just wanted to sort of offer kudos to the owner for not going for the absolute maximum that the Board traditionally would allow, because I looked at all of the other FARs along that street front, and they're all pretty much at the same .6 point. And so if someone had decided to go for 1.0, it would have really stood out. So just thank you for not being the first one on that side of the block to do it.
Yes, thank you. A good point.
Next hand is from District Manager Sean Campbell.
Thanks. I have a question about the bathroom in the cellar. I thought that there were DOB limits or constraints on building subground bathrooms. I might be mistaken, but I'm wondering if that's sort of as of right in this design or if it's part of the application or neither.
Okay, so let me actually write that down and look into that. I don't know offhand of any restrictions, but I would like to investigate that a little bit further. So I'm just making a note of that, and we can get back to you as soon as we find out more information.
Great, Bonnie. I'll do the same thing and circle back and compare notes. Sorry, Jay, did I cut you off? Was that you?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I'll save everyone the trouble. Bathrooms, three-piece bathrooms are allowed in a cellar with restrictive declaration. So during the course of the construction, DOB will ask for a restrictive deck, saying that nobody's going to live or there'll be no sleeping accommodations in the cellar. But other than that, they are permitted.
And once you provide DOB with the restrictive deck, could we ask for a copy of that as well?
Yeah, it'll also be filed on ACRIS. So I'm happy to give it to you.
Thank you.
Once they go through the, it's not going to be during the BSA process, it's during the DOB process.
Understood, but it would be good, I mean, that was exactly the constraint I was talking about, was it was to keep there from being underground illegal conversions.
No problem.
We appreciate just having it on record that we asked and it was answered. Thank you.
No problem. It's fairly common, these three-piece bathrooms in the open layout cellars. So I can definitely hand it over to you guys when it's executed.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions from Board members?
Motion to approve.
One sec, I just want to make sure, are there any, are there any members of the public that have joined this call that wish to speak? Seeing none, I heard a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. I guess we'll go ahead and try to do this in reverse. Is there anyone?
Before you move on with the vote, sorry to interrupt and break in, but who seconded? I heard a Frym is...
Frym's seconded.
Well, you can't first and second it, my friend.
No, I did. I, Yehuda Exting was the voting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Don't blame you all the time, okay? Always sometimes.
Thank you, Yehuda. It's hard when you're not on screen to see who's doing what. Thank you both.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. So we'll just do this in the reverse. Is there anyone that does not want to vote to recommend to the full Board this application, this special permit application? Is there anyone here that wishes to abstain from voting? Is there anyone here that has a conflict of interest and cannot vote on this recommendation? Or be ineligible? Okay, hearing none, I see that unanimously, the recommendation is to go to the full Board for this special permit. Thank you, everyone. The time of this hearing is being concluded at 6:41 PM. Thank you to our presenters and to the Board.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and your comments.
Hi, Bonnie.
Reminder, we're immediately going into the committee meeting to follow, so stay tuned while the chairs get themselves together and start that meeting. Are my co-chairs ready to start their committee meeting?
I'm here and ready. I'm just looking for Carl, if he is also joined.
I don't see him, and he wasn't expecting us to be so quick.
Perhaps. We can go ahead and get started. I was going to introduce the first agenda item anyway, so maybe... Can you guys hear me? Oh, there he is. Oh, great. Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Great. Hey, Carl.
The show is... Thanks, everyone.
Okay, then I guess we'll go right into it. This evening, we are holding our committee meeting for Education, Libraries, and Cultural Affairs. We have three designated agenda items and one item left for other business, along with myself, Carl Henry Caesar. We're the co-chairs of this committee. And our first agenda item tonight is regarding the Kings Theaters, Kings Cares Program. And tonight, we have Crystal Longo, the General Manager of Kings Theater, to tell us more about that. So, Ms. Longo, are you with us this evening?
Perhaps not. Crystal Longo and Emma Osmondson are both here, but they may have stepped away because the meeting was slated to start at 7:00. Carry on, I just wanted to interject there briefly.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in too. We do have Emma from Kings Theater with us. Emma, if you would like to introduce yourself and as we wait for Crystal to come back, that would be great. And for me, it's nice to see your face and meet you. Hello.
Hello, nice to meet you as well, face-to-face, to the extent that we can. My name's Emma Osmondson. I'm the Customer Experience Director at Kings Theater. I, myself, Crystal, and our colleague Chloe just started at Kings in October, so we're still fairly new to Kings as well as to Flatbush. So we're really excited to be a part of this meeting and to generally learn more about how we can be of assistance within the community and to better learn about how we can serve our patrons.
Great, I want to thank you, I want to applaud you really for taking the initiative to reach out for us. We, I didn't know, you know, we didn't know that there had been the change in hands. So the fact that you reached out and said hello bodes well. And, you know, there's certainly a lot that we can work on, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about the program and continuing the conversation. We've had really good rapport with Kings Theater throughout the different administrations of the theater. And there are a lot of, so there's a lot of good stuff happening and then challenges in the area as well.
Did you say? No. You want to go in the bed then? Let me ask Gloria.
I'm just going to shoot Crystal a message to let her know.
Sure.
Begin.
Okay. If not, we could take the second agenda item out of order if Crystal's not quite ready yet.
I think she got a pop-up to leave the meeting at some point, so she might have clicked that and gotten kicked out. But let me, I'll reach out to her and see.
Okay. All right, so in the meantime, I think then perhaps we'll move on to agenda item number two. And Carl, I'll turn it over to you to introduce our speakers for this evening.
No problem. Thank you very much for that, Greg. And so, folks, good evening. Hope everybody rang in the New Year well. So the question I have is Gillian, and how do I pronounce your middle name? Would it be Kayin or Khan Griston on the call?
Well, I believe that Desiree Gordon will be the main presenter for the Brooklyn Arts. She is on the line, but again, it looks like she just went back on there. That's Desiree Gordon.
Gotcha. Okay, no problem. Thank you very much for that, Anya. I appreciate that. And so, Desiree, good evening. Are you on the call? And so, can you hear me and my colleagues?
Hello, everyone. My name is Desiree Gordon. I am here and ready to present when you all are ready. Is that what's happening?
Yes, it is, Desiree. So thank you very much for being available. And, you know, I'm ready, Greg is ready, everyone else is ready. So yes, please begin.
Sure. It's my understanding that the PowerPoint that was presented by my colleague Gillian, whose name you were calling earlier, was shared with facilitators of tonight's meeting. Do you all have it? And would that be placed on the screen? I have my own copy, but I just wanted to understand what the audience would be seeing and if they would be able to follow along.
Did you receive a copy of that? I can also make you the presenter, I'm sorry, but I haven't received the copy. Have you?
I'm sorry, I wasn't hearing you very well.
I have not received a copy of that.
Anya, it was emailed to us. If you want to check the email, it was emailed this afternoon. If it's easier to just...
Yeah, I think I was out during that time. Sorry about that. I'll check right now.
That's okay, that's okay. We're here together. I'm going to give it a moment so that it can come onto the screen, but I will say that this is something, this being at this meeting was something that was very, very important to my colleagues. I'm so glad to be able to represent the Brooklyn Arts Council to you all this evening. And really, the presentation just gives an overview of a lot of what we do. We do so many things that the Brooklyn Arts Council, and sometimes the through line is hard for people to follow. So I hope that what I share today will just help people lock in and understanding of what we do and, you know, how we might be able to collaborate even, depending on what you all do. Okay? And I'm sorry, we don't typically use WebEx. When the document is up and visible to the audience, will I also be able to see it? So right now, I do not, I do not see it.
Yes, if we're, since, if we're the ones presenting it, you'll be able to see, it will come from Anya's screen.
Just give me one moment for that. I'm just downloading it now.
Sure.
So Desiree, like you had mentioned, this may be the first time you're using WebEx. And so what you should, what you should see on your end is, you know, once we've downloaded and then we start sharing the screen, you should see the layout on your screen changes a little bit to some kind of like, you know, presentation mode, for lack of a better word. So then, you know, the present, the PowerPoint would take up a majority of your screen and then the squares that show people's faces and/or, you know, it's blacked out, but you see like a phone icon, then those would be readjusted. So that's what you should be seeing, you know, once we've successfully downloaded it and then we're presenting.
Sure. Thank you. And if you all let me know if you want me to share it, I do see the share button on the lower dashboard of my own screen, so if...
If you don't mind, I'm so sorry. It's a Dropbox link and I can't access it. So if you don't mind, go ahead and press that and you should be good to go.
Sure. That is okay, that's okay. Optimize for text and images. Let's see. Okay. I'm trying to select for you all what you, what we need you to see. Here you go. All right. Excuse me. Hmm. You're going to just see it this way, since I wasn't planning to, for my screen view to be public. But what, do you all see the presentation at this point?
Yes.
You should see a black screen. You see that? You see a black screen? You see a black woman with a colorful, turban head wrap kind of thing? Okay, I'm seeing some nodded faces, so let's go. We empower artists. This is what, it's a refrain that we hear and say a lot at the Brooklyn Arts Council. We, even when we think about our grant-making, we think of it less as making grants and more of it sort of empowering artists to make community, empowering artists to make sustainability, empowering artists to make impact, you know? So we, we are artist-centered, is what that is also meant to sort of communicate. And we're interested in both serving artists' needs as well as building the capacity for artists and arts organizations and even arts administrators to serve the needs of communities. So there's this exchange dynamic that is a part of our work, sort of both locating the needs and as well as the assets of the creative community. Okay. Excuse me. So, you know, what's our mission? What do we do? Like I said, we center empower artists through programs that build and invest in Brooklyn and Brooklyn's communities. We're committed to equity in all that we do, in our grants, in our professional development services, and in our employment of artists in our arts access engagement opportunities for K through 12 people in kindergarten through 12th grade, as well as our creative Asian programs that happen in senior centers throughout the borough. We are advocates for an inclusive and participatory culture where all voices are heard. Like everybody else, we are in a continuous process of reviewing and refining our systems, reviewing and refining our processes, reviewing and refining our network so that we are reaching more and more of the faces of Brooklyn. We are, we partner with the arts community to drive equity in philanthropy and programming. And we connect artists, connect with artists to build relationships and supportive networks. We envision a Brooklyn that is joyful and just, and that is made all the more so with cultural interventions, with artists, arts organizations, and the things that we do and the people and places and orgs and businesses with whom we can partner. So we see ourselves the center as aggregators, right, of an equitable, sustainable, and, as I said, joyful Brooklyn. We are committed to be authentic, responsive, diverse, and accessible. And it's important to us that artists are supported, that they are thriving and recognized as fundamental to a healthy and engaged society. We believe that art and culture are at the heart of vibrant and healthy communities. We are not, we don't focus on any particular discipline, we are multi-disciplined organization, or we support artists of all disciplines. We look forward to a Brooklyn where artists are championed at each stage in their career. Often, we say, even in our grant-making presentations, we want a mixed bag, and we're not necessarily going to privilege those with the fanciest website or the slickest language. We're really interested in those who are committed to their communities and committed to their practice. And we want to be able to be the entry point to resources for emerging artists as well as, you know, for the ones that established artists can count on year after year. And we also look forward to a Brooklyn where arts and culture education is available to all, with its freedom and opportunity to celebrate cultural heritage through the arts, and where Brooklyn's diverse ethnicities and arts practices together make the community So that's sort of very conceptual, but what do we really have going on over here? Happy to let you know. So the Brooklyn Arts Council is more than 50 years old. So we're not new kids on the block necessarily, though we are very much committed to innovating our work and figuring out how we can continue to be responsive to contemporary conditions. But Brooklyn Arts Council is 50 years old and has been doing the work of grant-making, fiscal sponsorship, professional development, arts consultancy, arts and education, and cultural heritage support for that much time. Excuse me. So we are supported with our grant-making. For the longest time, it was entirely city and state funding through the Department of Cultural Affairs and the New York State Council on the Arts. So the Department of Cultural Affairs of New York City funds what we call the Brooklyn Arts Fund. And typically, we're able to support about 180 or so artists through the Brooklyn Arts Funds with grants between $2,000 and $5,000 with that money. With the state money, we present the local arts support grant opportunity, and those grants are the same size, $2,000 to $5,000. This year, we launched what we call the Creative Equations. Hi? Well, I thought I heard someone ask a question. I heard someone's voice. We launched what we call the Creative Equations Fund, and that is the very first time that we're able to make grants with private funding. And the Creative Equations Fund is our social justice investment strategy. So we're essentially trying to, with the Creative Equations Fund... Back on line. With the Creative Equations.
Sorry, Desiree. Does everybody, please, please put yourselves on mute? We're getting feedback from people whose mics are not on or are off. Thank you.
And I'm happy to ride those waves. And once I understood that it was just feedback, you may well hear my children at some point. So I know we're all making our way as best as we can in this new world. So again, the Creative Equations Fund is our social justice investment strategy that really crystallizes in our grant-making practice some of the values around creative coalitions, around a community building, around cultural equity that we have implemented in our other programs. We're sort of crystallizing them in our grant-making via the Creative Equations Fund, and we are very grateful to the Howard Gilman Foundation, the Mertz Gilmore Foundation, the New American Economy for supporting us in this work, and the Charlene Victor and L.J. Weiss Cultural Entrepreneur Fund. So said, so done, the background noise, hope you can bear with me. It is actually also funded by the Department of Cultural Affairs and is specifically for women-identified people and professional development for their practice in the arts. Okay? What is our fiscal sponsorship? We see our fiscal sponsorship as an innovation incubator. We support emerging cultural artists and projects that have strong artistic merit that align with our mission to enrich the cultural life of the borough. We provide coaching, often draft reviews for our fiscal sponsors and administrative support as they are moving to the next level with their grant-making or with their practice. And we connect artists, projects, and organizations with donors. Again, sort of always in this function of aggregating, connecting, building pathways to power, pathways to community, pathways to opportunity. Professional development happens primarily through what we call the Brooklyn Innovation Institute. And the Brooklyn Innovation Institute, once again, the Brooklyn Arts Council has been doing a lot of centralizing. Actually, may I ask one moment, please? One. Thanks all, my apologies. The Brooklyn Innovation Institute, uh, like I said, the Brooklyn Arts Council is a, an older organization. We've survived a couple of cycles and, and, and have, have been able to sort of be responsive to things. So we did do arts and education. We do cultural heritage, uh, sort of capacity building and support. We do this grant making. Brooklyn Innovation Institute was a way to make it make sense. Uh, so it be, it's essentially, we talk about it as a hub for experimentation and capacity building, where we are doing an awful lot of professional development for teaching artists, doing an awful lot of financial literacy for artists of all disciplines. We're doing an awful lot with more and more, uh, creative development and creative community building through our Bridge Works programs and our open studio lives. So really, we think about Brooklyn Innovation Institute as a, as a hub for opportunity and a hub for experimentation and a hub for exchange. Again, we don't see ourselves as, uh, the sole source of information and knowledge. We really do are interested in being a space where information and knowledge can be exchanged amongst the community. Programs are delivered both virtually and in person. Uh, they connect art networks of artists as well. Uh, our arts and education program, uh, it, it, on the face of it, you know, it, it fosters creativity and artistic expression for, for students. And the students can be anything from children to, again, adults and senior citizens that happens in residencies and performances. Uh, we also do a fair amount of creative aging work. But we also, the teaching arts and education program is also workforce development. We employ artists. Uh, so everything that we do is often, we're also, there's also an underlying impact sphere that has to do with sustainability. It has to do with economic viability of the sector and of the agents of the sector, the individual artists and organizations. So when we think about our arts and education work, yes, we're thinking about arts access, but we are also thinking about employing artists and, 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 uh, doing so in a way that's fair and sustainable. Okay? Our arts consultancy. We are trying to broker opportunities, artists. We work with, um, developers. We work with different corporations. We work with community groups to connect artists to what they do. Uh, artists, and that might be curating, uh, public art programs or, uh, residency programs. And any number of things, yeah? Some of the, our recent clients include Brookfield, the William Bale Hotel, the Gateway Center, Metro Tech Bid, uh, JMH Development, V3 Hotels, and TNT Scrap LLC. And that's a very short list. But just a representative sampling. Uh, what are artists saying? We have been in the process of hosting a number of, of artist focus groups. Uh, one as a part of an, an audit, an equity audit on our grant making practices that we are, are sort of led with the other arts councils, the four other arts councils in the city. Uh, we had a focus group with them. We also had a focus group, uh, with artists as we were thinking about our development practices. Uh, and we are, um, we were really braced and, and encouraged to understand that artists recognize and appreciate the work. And we want to make sure that more artists are, uh, aware of what we do and how I might be able to support them. So these are just some pictures of, of us in community with folk. And, uh, again, you can take down this information should you have any questions for myself or my colleague, uh, at any other point. I'm happy to, to stay if folk have questions. Um, I know I shared a lot of information and ran through it very, very quickly, but I was trying to be sensitive to your time. But I, but I am available if you, if anyone here has questions they would like to ask.
So Desiree, thank you very much for, uh, that presentation. Really appreciate that. And so I, oh, sorry, um, I do have a question. Oh, thank you. I do have a question, but first I just want to open it up to the attendees to see if anyone else has a question first. Okay.
So then in that case.
We can just chat. Dwayne Joseph has a hand up and Greg is, uh, also.
Okay, cool. So then how about let's do, I think, Dwayne Joseph? And then Sean, you said Greg had his hand up afterwards or? Okay, let's do that.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Carl and Greg, for, uh, bringing this presenter to the board. Uh, thank you, Desiree, for presenting tonight. Very much, very informative, very appreciative. Um, I'm curious to know if you have any information on, uh, projects or programs you're currently, um, uh, either funding or running in Community Board 14 in Central Brooklyn? Um, and how we as a board can help, um, artists connect with you if, if you're not running? Uh, and if you are running or funding something, how we can amplify those artists that you are supporting?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that question. You know, a lot of what we do in the last, obviously, like very, everybody else in the last number of, of last couple of years has been primarily virtual, right? And so we are, they're accessible to everyone who has broadband access, of course, um, and meant for everyone. What we did, uh, specifically to connect with see folk in, in Community Board 14 with our grants, uh, the grant cycle that we're currently reviewing, is we hosted a couple of info sessions, that in partnership with organizations in CB14 to make sure that artists in this area knew about the opportunity. Uh, look going, what we have also been doing is sort of prioritizing artists in, uh, did you, you said you all are in Crown Heights. Is that the, the CB14? Community Board 14? Did I just say that correctly?
Flatbush, Midwood, and a little Kensington, south of Prospect Park to Avenue P.
Sure. Thank you so much for that. So I will tell you this. While our programs are open to everyone, the neighborhoods that we are focusing on for recruitment, recruitment of artists to get high-touch, one-on-one services, uh, with financial, uh, financial, uh, literacy, support and coaching, uh, where we are focusing, trying to make sure a certain percentage of our artists that are featured in our open studio lives, for instance, repri- come from. Where we are trying to make sure we get some of our content to the schools. Our neighborhoods that have been, that were identified as the ones heaviestly, uh, impacted by COVID and ones that have had the longest, uh, most consistent unemployment rates. So we're looking at that health factor. We're looking at that economic factor. And the next factor that we're going to be looking at are education outcomes. So the neighborhoods that have consistently low high school graduation rates and or low performance on the state and standardized tests. I want to congratulate you all. Community Board 14 is not featuring, uh, in those, you know, at the top of those lists. So know this, our community promotion promo partners network will be, there are going to, there are two sections within that, that promo network. Some that are in those target neighborhoods. And then there, then organizations, partners, influencers from throughout Brooklyn. So organizations in your neighborhoods that want to stay connected to us, that want to be able to tell us what you all are doing so we can promote what you are doing as well via our networks, they can connect with me. You all saw my email address and I'll drop it in the chat as well. And we can make sure that you all get connected to our community promo partners network. And but, but we, what I will say is that we ha- we have not, are not prioritizing you, your neighborhoods for the reasons that I gave before. When we're thinking about which artists to recruit or which schools we want to make an extra concerted effort to make sure they're getting our content, that kind of thing. All the same, if we hear from folk in your neighborhoods, we will be responding. And once again, we will, our general promotion will, does get to you all and folk in your neighborhoods who are signed up for our newsletter. And signing up for our newsletter is another thing that can, can be happening as well.
So thank you very much for that, Desiree Dwayne. So did Desiree answer, um, all of your questions? Or do you have any follow-up questions for Desiree in regards to, um, her response?
Uh, no, she answered my questions. Um, I, I was hoping we would have some organizations that were funded, but, uh, or are being supported. But, you know, we, we can amplify. That's our job. That's our part.
And by the way, we definitely do have grantees from the neighborhoods Midwood, Kensington, et cetera, that I, that were, uh, that are a part of this community board. We definitely do ha- have worked with schools in this neighborhood. But the, I think the way I understood the question was, like, are we making a concerted effort to reach these neighborhoods? We're actually focusing for purposes of racial equity, cultural equity, economic equity, et cetera, on the ne- some of the neighborhoods that are featuring, uh, more prominently in, in the indicators of need.
Our, our community, also, we also boast, um, being the, uh, community in which Ella J. Weiss resides. So, so we.
Yes.
Um, and, and she's terrific. There are a number of other hands up and another presenter. So, um, just making sure, Carl, that you have the list. Nina, Greg, Gail, Shahid Florencia.
Thank you for that, Sean. And, um, Desiree, thank you for answering Dwayne's question. And Dwayne, thank you for posing it. And so, um, Nina's on deck. Nina, just before you go, I'd just like to acknowledge, um, Anthony Drummond from Councilmember Farrah Lewis's office. So, Mr. Drummond, thank you very much for joining us.
Yeah, pleasure. Good to be back. Thank you.
Definitely. Great to have you. And so, um, with that one, Nina, um, you're up.
Okay. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, for that, uh, presentation. It was very, very interesting, um, in a, a previous, um, lifetime, it seems. Um, I was actually an art major as well as an art, uh, art teacher. And, um, so I would just like to say, I mean, first of all, I think that our CB is what one of the two most diverse, um, community boards in, I know, Brooklyn for sure, possibly, uh, New York City and as a whole. So don't overlook us. But I just wanted to kind of hone in a little bit more on, um, art education in the schools because, um, there's just so much evidence that, um, you know, first of all, that these programs have been cut, um, because of austerity budgets, because of this focus on standardized tests and so forth. And so I wondered if you could hone in a little bit more on what specifically, um, your council is doing to kind of counter that and to provide, um, art for children who might not otherwise get it.
So Nina, thank you. And so, um, question for you, Nina, just to confirm. So you were, you were stating like, you know, art's a big part of your life and, you know, the importance of this to you and for the community. Was this, was this like, uh, was this you just reiterating the importance of that? Or is there, is there a question you have in there about like, um, some of the supports that Desiree had mentioned within, you know, our presentation?
Because I think she wanted to know what does the Brooklyn Arts Council do to make the arts accessible to, to young people is how I understood that question. Do you feel like that was correct? That's a correct sort of capture from your question, Nina?
Yes, exactly. To go into the schools, um, and make, um, our programs available to, um, to our young people.
So Brooklyn Arts Council sends, uh, teaching artists into schools all throughout the borough. And are funded to do that primarily through, uh, New York City stated funded programs like CASA, which again, is for K through 12 schools, and SU CASA, which is for creative education, excuse me, creative aging in senior centers. We also have several DOE contracts, uh, in various schools. So these are, they can be for residencies, which would be a series of workshops of, and any discipline, everything from dance to, uh, music making, writing, clowning, to, uh, one-off workshops and presentations, uh, performances. We have one of our, um, programs that's funded by the state, actually, is called Global Rhythms. And those that we sort of talk about those as journeys. Because what they are are performance residencies that take students, that introduce students to global cultures. And through a course of a series of performance engagements. The work that, I, I, I suppose, I, I, I'll start there. And, and maybe there's a, a more specific question that you're asking. Brooklyn Arts Council goes into schools. We go into community centers. We go into senior centers with, uh, teaching artists, who, who we also train to make sure that students are receiving a high caliber experience. Does, uh, uh, so your basic question, what do we do? That is what we do. If you would like to probe it, um, please let me know. If you, if you are asking for something more.
Are these kinds of programs, um, or are at least, um, a major amount of them, um, do they, um, how do I put this? Do they actually actively engage, um, the students as participants and as doers of art? And as creators as compared to just seeing an artist do their, you know, performance or whatever?
The bulk of the programs, especially the residencies, are absolutely hands-on, interactive, uh, take students. We, we, we are really committed to this, this matter of authenticity is, 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 is about making sure that students can bring themselves to the art. Uh, we believe that everyone has art in them and that we're not interested in, uh, creating, uh, engagements where people are just passively receiving, but actively engaging their own experiences and output.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Okay. Thank you for that question, Nina, and thank you, Desiree. And so the next two people up, we have Greg and then we have Gail.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Gordon, for the presentation. I just had a quick question from the artists' side of things. I'm just curious in the time of COVID, if you've had to change your priorities or change your focus from their perspective as well, particularly for those disciplines that may have been hit hardest by COVID. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. What we've had to do, I'll speak, it's, we, I'll speak to the grants first. In terms of changing our priorities, we had to change our, our, uh, priorities and sta- standards or requirements around reporting. We had to change our, and be much more flexible about what it means to be community engaged, right? And we really made sure that we loosen up, uh, the requirements that artists would have to meet so that we could get the money to them. And it's really just been, you just get artists' money. Uh, so we, uh, we, in order to make sure that we were a part of the City Artist Core Initiative, really pivoted, uh, hired a whole new person to make sure that we would be a part of promoting that opportunity so as many Brooklyn artists as possible knew about it. And, and you all should know that the selection process for that opportunity, uh, and there were sixteen organizations across the city who were a part of that, the third tier of applications. We really prioritize, again, neighborhoods hardest hit by COVID. We prioritize neighborhoods of color. We prioritize people who are differently abled. And we almost, we looked at the art and the quality of the art last. It was like, we believe you. You make art and we believe that it's good. Now, we just want to make sure we get as much of this money as possible to, to, to artists. And so I think, I don't know that it sort of shifted our focus, but it sort of amplified and deepened our commitment to just give the artists what they need as fast as we can. Uh, so while we, while during the pandemic, especially in the early times, we kept hearing people say, "Oh, it's so nice to slow down. It's so, it's so nice to have a rest." That it, that's when it got, um, heaviest for us. And apropos, because that's when it got worse for artists, right? So that's, that, that would be my initial response to that, really thinking about the grant. So, that's, that, that would be my initial response to that, really thinking about the grant making. And yeah, I would say also too, there has been, uh, in terms of our professional development, more interest in how, unlike, uh, online production, uh, more interest in how, you know, training artists have been interested in how to do, digital production, um, what, graphic design, how to pivot in the terms of their careers as well, what are sort of adjacent fields that you can apply art work, art skills to, to, uh, sort of create new avenues and of opportunity and sustainability. Those kinds of things have also been, uh, sort of topically, how we've been responding to and hearing that we need to respond to the shifts in artists' experiences. I see a hand, but I know Carl, you were also, um, keeping a cue. So I'll just wait for you to let me know who, who should talk next.
Sure, that is correct. And so, um, thank you for that Desiree. And so Greg, did, um, did Desiree answer your question or do you have, uh, like a piggyback question for that one?
Oh, that, that was a great answer. Thank you very much.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So then, next up Desiree, we have three people. So we have Gail and then we have Shaheed and then we have Florencia. So Gail, go right ahead.
All right. Uh, thank you. I was smiling, um, and nodding my head and all of that when the discussion came up about Brooklyn Arts Council. Prior to the pandemic and prior to my retirement two years ago, so I'd say about four years ago, I was made aware of the Brooklyn Arts Council by way of none other than Ella Weiss. At that time, Ella Weiss was, um, an administrator there and she was soliciting different agencies, companies, et cetera, for, for, on behalf of Brooklyn Arts Council. So there, in, in reference to some of the, uh, questions that was asked from some of our members, there are a lot of us in Flatbush that are, um, aware of Brooklyn Arts Council. I, I'm, I'm glad now that you are presenting yourself, uh, to the board because I think there is a lot that we can do for and with each other. So I do commend everything that you guys are doing. And I see that Ella now has a, uh, grant, which is, which is good. And Flatbush will be in the house. Thank you. That's Flatbush, Kensington. She said, you know, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. And thank you so much. Thank you so much. Ella, uh, Jay White, we here. I'm about two years into my stint at Brooklyn Arts Council, but Ella and all her work and all her connections, uh, remain very present. In, in the work, in the lore, in the culture of the organization, absolutely. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you very much for that, Gail. And so next up, uh, Shaheed, please.
Yes, uh, hi everybody and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Yes, uh, so, uh, I just want to introduce that, uh, I just, uh, take, uh, some credit that I was the first person who introduced Brooklyn Art Council in Community Board fourteen. In two thousand fourteen, uh, when I met with, uh, Director Folklore in Brooklyn Art Council and we discussed about the little Pakistan, South Asian communities and Urdu language program and all these activities. So we started a program with a Pakistani Urdu language poetry in two thousand fourteen. And then we established, uh, one more program in two thousand fifteen when our, the Independence Brooklyn Mela is happened at Conny Island Avenue. And then we have, uh, two more programs with our regional, Pashto language, uh, which is in, uh, one of the, uh, regional language of Pakistan. So, uh, Brooklyn Art Council with, we have a folklore, we have a telling story, we have poetry and we have a musical program. So, uh, if anybody wants to know, something about last seven years, so I can share, uh, with detail about Brooklyn Art Council in Community Board fourteen. Thank you very much.
Shaheed, thank you very much. And what I wanted to let you know about is that we, inasmuch as we no longer have our, what used to be called the Folklore Department or Folk, yeah.
Yes, I know.
Folk Arts Department, we do have, uh, what we are calling, and what is, what is acting as a cultural heritage advisory group. Okay, Shaheed? And if, I don't know if you can text me, put in the chat your email address. I will put in the chat mine. And if, before you go, you would take it down and just send me an email saying, this is Shaheed from C B fourteen. I would like to plug you, uh, extend the invitation to attend, uh, commu- Cultural Heritage Advisory Group meetings. The Cultural Heritage Advisory Group is our concrete, structural, consistent, regular, uh, sort of, uh, mechanism for making sure that despite the fact that we do no longer have a department for folk arts, that we have a connection to those communities. And specifically, it's the way, it's the place where, representatives from different folk art communities can tell us what to do, can give us feedback on our programs, can make sure that we're, with, with the kinds of programs that we're doing, uh, respond to the very specific needs of cultural heritage practitioners. So I think, especially because you, as you've just described, have been so instrumental, uh, and, 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 and in your leadership in connecting your community to Brooklyn Arts Council and us to you, I want, to me, I want to make sure that we retain that relationship because we do not currently have a representative from your community on our Cultural Heritage Advisory Group. So it is, it is very, very important. Folk are weighing in on our programs, especially our Wellness Studio Program, which is going to launch in January and will be featuring, um, cultural heritage practitioners in the Sonic Wellness Festival, as well as a multidisciplinary project called Neighborhood Clinic Healing Installations. I'm sorry, I know I'm talking a long time. You've got other people to present. Shaheed, I, I really want to make sure that we connect after this as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that. So we have, as far as I can tell, um, two more people who have questions. So we have Florencia and then we have, um, Joel Segal. So Florencia, you're up.
You're muted Florencia.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks Desiree for your presentation. And I just wanted to say that, I, I live in the northern section of our, of Community Board fourteen and I taught within parts of our community and, and, there are sections of our community that do, that do need, you know, to be a part of this process. There are youths within our communities that really are, um, need the assistance. They need the help, they need the grants. And, uh, I just wanted to ask, is also photography one of your disciplines?
We definitely, as far as our grant making, uh, have a visual arts, uh, category. And photography absolutely, uh, fixed the bill. And, um, again, I don't want to mischaracterize, uh, our focus. We are open to reaching out to all of Brooklyn, working with artists from all of Brooklyn. And it, and all the organizations and artists from, from throughout the borough can be on our community promo partners network, will be featured in our programs, will receive services, will receive education programs, all of that. It's just that we're gonna, there was an extra effort for, for certain communities. And as we build our capacities, we'll be able to build, to, to, to focus on more communities as well. Please know that. And, uh, thank you for being here. I dropped my email address here in the, in the chat. If you let us know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna respond.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Thank you for your question Florencia. So, um, next up, uh, Joel Segal.
Thank you so much, Chair. Uh, Ms. Gordon, I want to thank you, uh, so much for the work that you do. I'm, I've been a big advocate for arts in schools and, uh, just in my, uh, going through, with my child through school, uh, and my own growing up here in New York. I know how important it is for there to be arts education in schools. I mean, I know you're doing all sorts of programs outside of schools. And, uh, one thing I want to point out to our members is, art in schools, um, is often at the, uh, at the discretion of a principal of any given school. And it's important that, you know, that we as community board members, um, advocate to our schools that they, uh, 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 promote arts programs. You know, there are a lot of children who don't necessarily, uh, uh, get the highest scores in standardized tests in math or science or, or, or language, but who have talent, dance, draw, they can play music, you know. There, there are geniuses amongst us who, you know, uh, 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 don't score on standardized tests, although the standardized tests are often the measure of a success of a principal or a school. You know, I brought a band program, a tremendous band program, um, into our elementary school, which by the way, I wanted to tell you, we have a few, a number of, uh, uh, Title One schools in our neighborhood. And my child attended a Title One, um, elementary school in our, so we have, we have children in our neighborhood who are, uh, less well off. I brought a band program and it was embraced by the principal. It was led by the, uh, the great Arturo Farrell of the Afro Latin Jazz Alliance, if any of you know who that is. And Arturo came and performed at the school. And then we got a new principal and he, and our school was called the School for the Arts. And the new principal didn't want to be the School for the Arts and he eliminated the band program. So it was just a, a rude, a lesson to me of how, you know, our, our, our principals determine whether there are going to be art programs in school and, and the art programs are so, uh, uh, so important. Um, and just another point, there is money for art programs. In fact, uh, uh, our now term limited out councilman funded this band program. I, I, I pitched it to him, he funded it and, and, and it turned out to be a feather in his cap. He always thanked me for doing it because it, it reflected well on him. So there is money to be had, for arts, uh, uh, programs. And arts are so important for kids, for socializing, for expanding their consciousness and for achieving. You know, I'm very proud. I have a son who's in, uh, 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 LaGuardia High School now playing his trumpet because he got tremendous public school, uh, music training. Uh, 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 we found out about a great middle school out in Williamsburg and it's so important for kids. So I applaud you for, for the work you do. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank, and we applaud you for the work you do. It is not easy to move a child successfully through New York City schools. So congratulations to you, LaGuardia. It's a privilege, it's a privilege to work in the arts and to, to be an artist myself and to straddle that space as well, to straddle the space of art making and also art strategy. It's a privilege. So thank you all. Thank you all for listening to us.
Excellent. And thank you very much for sharing that Joel. Always appreciate it.
Thank you.
So then, um, I think then in terms of questions, um, that may be it Desiree, um, since I don't believe there are any more, then just a reminder folks, Desiree had posted, um, her information in the chat. And so, you know, if people have questions, then Desiree, they can contact you at the, um, the contact information you listed in the chat, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and it, I will either respond to them or I'll make sure that it gets to the people on my team that are, that, that work specifically in the area of their question, whether it's grant making, fiscal sponsorship, arts in education or our program development. So it's an awful lot happening in a programs department, uh, and a lot of really smart people, uh, working really hard to make it happen well. Thank you all for having us. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you as well, Desiree. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate you Carl. Take it easy.
You too. Take care. So then on that note, um, I turn it over back to my co-chair Greg Alvarez and, um, Greg, back to you.
Sure. So I, I think we'll go back and, uh, it looks like, uh, Ms. Longo has joined us, I believe. So, uh, if at this time, uh, she could join us and, uh, tell us all about the great things going on with Kings Theater, we would greatly appreciate that.
Hi, everybody. It's really nice to be here. It's my first community board meeting with all of you. Uh, my name is Crystal Longo. I'm the new general manager for Kings Theater in Flatbush, Brooklyn. Uh, formerly the general manager for Celebrate Brooklyn in Prospect Park as well this past summer. I've been in Brooklyn for my whole life and my family is from Flatbush, so I'm very excited, uh, to be joining this community board and seeing how we could all work together. Um, I will keep my, uh, part of this presentation pretty short and sweet, being that we are short on time. Uh, let's see if I could do this correctly for sharing my screen. Can you guys see my screen? It's hard to, uh?
Uh, we don't see it just yet.
No? Okay, hold on. It says presenting on my end.
There you go.
Here we go.
Got it? All right. Let me know if this pops up as well. Is that working?
It is, yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so Kings Theater, I'm sure some of you are familiar, familiar with it, um, is primarily a concert venue. There is a strong, uh, push this year and going further to, uh, have a more theater-based dynamic at Kings as well. Uh, and to start bringing more programming, um, for children, um, in more of like the theater and performance space outside of just doing, um, concerts. So Kings Theater is a venue rejuvenated out of the love for Brooklyn, but for the betterment of creativity everywhere. During a time where our voices are more than just inspirational, they are transformative. I was with Kings prior to the pandemic for about two weeks before we shut down, um, and then came back on about two months ago. So we had, we launched with our fifth annual Kings Care Thanksgiving Luncheon. That was, took place on Thanksgiving Day with Erasmus High School. Uh, we served over three hundred meals, um, and had three hundred and fifty to four hundred attendees. That is held in our Kings Courtyard. Um, so I'd love to get feedback or communicate after this event on how we could potentially spring and summertime when Kings is a little bit slower on our programming, figuring out ways to do, uh, community-driven experiences in our courtyard, which holds about five hundred people. Our Kings Care Thanksgiving Luncheon was partnered with Stop and Shop, Erasmus Academy of Hospitality and Tourism, Flatbush Avenue Bid, Church Avenue Bid and NYPD Seventy Precinct. And this is just a photo of some of the group that worked this last Thanksgiving. We had about two hundred volunteers sign up for this. We ended up having to close our volunteer signup. Uh, it was pretty overwhelming how many people wanted to come out and give out free food and, um, take care of the people in our community. Uh, roughly eighty volunteers assisted on day of with breaking down and setting up, serving food, providing information, um, and helping distribute coats. We did a coat drive, uh, November through December, uh, and gave away over nine hundred coats in the community. Um, and then ended up having so many left over from everyone that came to our shows. We sent out warm winter. Uh, students from Erasmus brought, prepped and served all of the food that was given out. They were super excited. They got gift cards from Stop and Shop, went to the grocery store, uh, then went back to their school and prepped all of the meals, uh, the two, three days before, and then brought it to Kings the day of. In terms of our community about holidays. And then this year coming up, we have several of these. And then this year coming up, we have several of these.
Crystal, you're breaking up. Crystal, you're breaking up as you, you might want to turn off your video. Yeah, just, will that work if we, if we don't see your face but we can still see your screen? Anya, will that work? Just keep trying.
It just gives me, let me see if I just move closer, sorry. Is, is it still doing the same thing?
No, now you're good.
Okay. Maybe I was just too far away from the computer. Let me know if you could still see my screen.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Other initiatives, Workforce One partnership. When we returned from the pandemic in September, Kings hosted a job fair with Workforce One and we hired all local ushers, bartenders, security, and house staff. We prefer to hire within Flatbush and our community, being that we are a staple venue within our community. We want to hire staff that reflects the people that live around us. We also were held as a voting polling site in 2020, where we served as a poll site for the presidential election. As most of you are aware, January 1st, we were supposed to hold the inauguration for the mayor as well. But due to COVID, we had to cancel that event. But we were very much looking forward, we had been working on that event for several months leading up to it, and we were really looking forward to hosting that at Kings. Would have been perfect for our community. There is a past Caribbean community event, July 2021, which was a free lobby event for Paul Beardrun. COVID test at Kings, September and October of 21. We did free sting and vaccination for community members. And I don't know if anyone on this call will be able to help us with the future of this, but we would love to be doing the annual back-to-school drives. We did this with, I can't see my screen, but with the Flatbush Avenue Bid, where we gave school supplies in partnership with them. We very much would like to do that in 2022 and years coming up. So if there's anyone on this call that would like to be part of that, please reach out to me after this. And basically, we are just here today to be able to speak with all of you and get your feedback on what Kings can do to be more involved with the community. I'm not sure, if you knew my predecessor, Stephanie Tomlin, she's a dear friend of mine, I've known her for years. She's actually the one that called me into this position. So if there is anyone or any way that Kings can be more involved in the community, that is prime focus for the new team that is here, especially me, our staff. I don't know if you know this, our staff is all fully from Flatbush and from the area. They've been with the venue six, since, six years ago, day one, when the venue opened. So all of our ushers have been here since the very beginning and they're the most loving and wonderful staff and take so much pride in what our venue is. And a lot of our staff also uses that as a safe haven for people to come and get a break from some other living situations. And they come to Kings and really look forward to having that as a safe space and a great experience for them. So whatever we can do, our main focus, Emma and Chloe are also on this call. It's my number one and number two over at Kings. And our primary focus right now outside of community outreach is specific outreach to our staff. So we are doing headshots this month for all of our staff and updating their resumes and just helping build our staff to be able to grow in their careers. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Longo, very much for that presentation. At this time, I invite anyone to use the raise hand function for any questions that you may have for Ms. Longo. And I see one so far, Dwayne Joseph. Dwayne, please go ahead and ask your question.
Hi again, y'all, busy night for me, it seems. Thank you very much for the great attention, Ms. Longo. I wanted to ask, you, you mentioned how the theater currently is supporting its staff in their career development. And it popped into my head, does the Kings Theater currently host any of the workforce development programs? A workforce develop, connect, development programs from BYCD specifically, you know, SYEP, the Summer Youth Employment Program, or the Work, Learn and Grow Program, where young people might be able to learn some of those, those theater skills, behind, like the behind-the-scenes skills? If not, have, would you think about it or have you thought about it?
We would definitely think about it, I'd love to hear more about it. Where I've landed right now in the last two months of being with the theater is communicating with Erasmus and trying to figure out how we do placement of their students at Kings Theater as well as part of their internship program. But as many students or kids or anyone that we could get into that building that are from the community, I'm open to all of it. So I'd love to sidebar on that, Dwayne.
Absolutely, I'll share my email with you in the chat.
Perfect, I'll put mine in there as well for everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we, we have another question, I'll turn it over to District Manager Sean Campbell.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, want to acknowledge that you're already working with great community stakeholders. That I know that you've been very, a very valuable partner with the, with the bid and working with Caribbean and the Workforce One Development Program is, is, you know, a great benefit to the community. But, and you've also been an active participant in Brooklyn Community Board 14's youth conference. So we, we hope to maintain that partnership and we'll circle back on the details of that. I talked to Emma a little bit about it. So just wanted to, just wanted to say youth conference because it's time to get started on that.
It is, I've got, we're down, we would love to.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, our next question is from Barden, so please proceed.
Thanks, Greg. I can't help thinking that there's this perfect storm here between the mayor's inauguration, the Kings Theater, and we being the grassroots level of city government. And if there's some way that we can try to coordinate some neighborhood function through our board office in coordination with you and the mayor's office during the inauguration, I think that would be great fun. So not even a question, just a quick toss of the hat, thanks so much.
Absolutely, I think it's really important for it to be the grassroots level, having that kind of communication with that team. We have, we're at a place right now where...
Oh, we seem to have lost you again, Crystal, are you, are you still there?
Well... And my comment didn't really require an answer anyway, I'm just putting, putting it out there and seeing if something eventually comes of it.
Yeah, she did seem receptive, so. Okay, thank you very much, Barden. I'm just looking at the list of questions.
Can you hear me? I could hear you guys again.
Oh, there she is, great.
I have, they gave me this, uh, computer with an amazing amount of firewall to protect their information. But yeah, we're hoping to do another, I don't know where you guys lost me, but we're in communication with the mayor's team to do something this year after this COVID settles down a little bit. And as soon as we do, I'll make sure that you guys know and I'll bring that to the board so we can start brainstorming and can all connect on how we could work together.
Very good, very good, thank you. And thank you, Barden. Okay, and we have one more question, it seems, Glenn Mullen, by all means.
Thank you. I'm wondering how sophisticated your air filtration system is at the Kings Theater in terms of opening it up for venues, you know, when Omicron dies down a little bit?
So we invested, I won't say the number, in an entirely new HVAC system in Kings Theater during the pandemic. So we have constant changed filters and it is, from the green rooms all the way to front of house, it is completely aerated. We also have, during the off days, have like all of our doors open after a show to continually clear it out. But we have a whole new HVAC system. I would leave it to my operations team to fully dive into how intense it is, but it was a large investment that we immediately went into at the middle of the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barty, your hand is still up, just wanted to make sure I didn't shortchange you. Okay, all right. With that, I, I don't see any other questions at this time. In light of the time, I, I would say perhaps we leave it there. Obviously, Ms. Longo, we have your information. And I know we'll have that available to anyone who would be interested in contacting you further about any of the programs you've spoken about or, or any other things we've discussed this evening. So I'd like to thank you, on behalf of the committee, for your time. And we look forward to working with you more so in the future.
The feeling is mutual, thank you guys for letting us speak on this panel and I really look forward to communicating all, more with all of you because that is, I think, what Kings should be for. So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I know the, so the next item on the agenda is number three. And I believe we have our, our board chair, Joanne Brown, to speak regarding the status of the Flatbush African Burial Ground site. So at this time, I will turn it over to you, Joanne, to take it from there.
Thank you, Greg, and Greg and Carl and the rest of the board members and our presenters. I'm sorry I jumped the gun on starting that committee meeting. I guess I'm just so used to public hearings just melding right in. So I apologize that we got an early start. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion about the African, the Flatbush African Burial Site. I wanted to start with a report from Gail Smith. There was a meeting on December 14th that I unfortunately was not able to attend, but Gail was able to attend. So if she wouldn't mind reporting out about that meeting, and then I would just wanted to have a discussion with board members here on how we can support getting more community feedback on how the space, how the community residents want this space being used. So Gail, if you have a moment to tell us how the meeting went and what the results were?
Okay, um, just quickly, this was my first meeting and last meeting unfortunately due to the, the new administration. But there were a few takeaways that I did get from that. The first had to do with an RFP that was supposed to, it happened for housing. That was actually no longer, that, that was flagged to no longer be something that the existing members of the African burial ground would, would want. So the, the housing project is, for lack of a better word, dead. The other piece that I got out of it is that because it was the end of the year, this, this meeting took place on December 14th and the new mayor has now come in. There is a new borough president. So basically, everything that had been spoken about in the past in reference to the burial grounds will now have to be placed on hold until the new administrators come in as well as the, the new council person for CB 14. They were per Tejera, she was the one that was chairing of the meeting and I presume she chaired the other meetings on behalf of the mayor's office. She did say that they were going to produce a transit, transition document for the incoming borough president and from, and from the mayor's, for the mayor's office, and a vision report. Now, I don't know if that actually has happened. I've not heard from Sean, so I'm sure that she has not received such documents. But they were supposed to send that to the community at large. And they had, Tejera had said that they were going to have a meeting before the end of the year. Well, it's now January, so that's not happening. The Congresswoman, Yvette Clark, was on that call and she is very interested in moving forward with different things. But once again, because of the situation that it was the end of the year, nothing much had happened and would be decided on until the new administrators come forth. And, and that, that was basically it.
Thank you very much, Gail, for filling in all of the board members and other people on this call. So once the RFP was nullified, you know, this, this parcel of land was under the jurisdiction of housing preservation and development. And so now there is no agency, as far as I know, that is shepherding this parcel of land and the concepts that are accumulating around it. So part of this discussion is about processes. We wait for the mayor and the borough president and the, the Congresswoman to circle back on how to approach it. But I wanted to have a discussion with board members here about, number one, interest in perhaps creating a community board task force so that we can go ahead and acquire community feedback on how they would like the land be used, whether it be a memorial site that has programming, a memorial site that does not have programming. There, there are, you know, many ideas out there just waiting to be heard. So that's the first part. And if there is interest in this committee for a task force, we can ask the full board to consider that at the general meeting that is next week. So go ahead, Gail, please.
Oh, no, no, when you said generally, you're talking our general meeting.
That's right. Oh, that's right. It's a, it should be a board action and I'd like to see, you know, community, board members invested in, in that task force. Alvin, you had a hand up, Alvin, did you want to go ahead?
I, I'm wondering directly to Sean whether it'd be useful to get in touch with EDC concerning this, this matter? Because they're going to be, have to be involved in turning over the land to any organization that's going to operate a program there.
I mean, I can get in touch and see what their, what their involvement with turning it over is. The, the borough, the mayor as borough president sent out a letter noting that he wanted to see it turned over to DPR. And so I guess you're right that however, to whomever it gets turned over, it has to go through EDC and I can find out, but they're just... The concern is kind of, it isn't funded now. You know, with the developments were funded and, and so I'm not sure, I'm not sure where it's going to go without funding. But yeah, sure, I can reach out to EDC and see what they'll, what they'll say, given how early we are into transitions.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, and, and please excuse my, my ignorance with this. I'm just of the mind, and once again, I only was able to participate in that one meeting. There were a lot of community engagement, a lot of different organizations were there. So I'm just feeling before we, as a community board, move forward, we get some information from the mayor, the new mayor, the new borough president, to see where their heads are before moving ahead. I can say that at the meeting, there was representation from then borough president Eric Adams' office. And they said that there would be a smooth transition in the mayor's office. So I, I'm just of the mind that before we vote on anything, that we wait and find out exactly what's going on. Also, there was, there's supposed to have been about $4 million in funding that was available and that money was supposed to have been... that was available, and that money was supposed to have been released with the the new city council person. So that's just my thoughts about it.
So you know, where I'm really coming from is um not so much, I mean, about facilitating process, about being able to be the community board that is communicating with whatever agencies are gonna be involved in this, and then being able to um spoke out to the community, like, uh you know, as we're one hub and they, and the council member is another hub, and the two groups that are facilitating awareness around the site are other hubs. So I think with regards to organizing ourselves so that we can be uh more proactive when there there is engagement from the mayor's office and the council member's office uh and the borough president, that we have a collective group of people that is very knowledgeable from this board, because they've joined together in a task force. Um so that's my thinking about around why we should form this. Um it also allows us to be, you know, proactive um with engaging with whatever, whatever agency is gonna come, you know, forth and adopt um and fund, we hope. So that's, that was really my thinking. I wanted to create um a task force that became almost, you know, our community board experts on this, just like we had a task force for the census. It's a pretty important thing going on in the district. Um so that was my thinking, Gail, not, not to overstep or to lead in any way, but to just do what we do, which is be a really good bridge.
Jolly noted. Thank you for the clarification.
I see Nina's uh hand is up. Go ahead, Nina.
I may, I may actually be um kind of duplicating what you're, what you were saying, but I just, I know that I do follow um one group on uh Facebook. Haven't been able to get to their meetings because they have them on Saturdays, unfortunately, but um yeah, I just, I just guess I just want to um reinforce the idea that um we need to make sure that we are listening and acting as a voice uh for these other groups that have been very involved and have expressed not only a lot of concerns, but a lot of interest in this parcel of land, um especially because CV boards unfortunately have gotten a reputation for kind of stepping over people in, at least in some communities, and not listening to what they have to say. So.
Uh I I understand that, and it's, it's not really that we would be making a decision about the site, but just more, you know, again, as I said, bridging between the agents, as we always do. The, you know, the whole part of the process is bridging between the agencies and the community. Um Glenn, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Um to comment, well, for comment the question, the the comment is, I think, um initiating this task force early is a good idea so that we can start gathering information as it comes in and be prepared to take whatever steps are necessary when they become necessary. Uh and also, Gail, um mentioned that there were a bunch of different groups at this meeting. I wonder if you could give us some idea of who the groups might have been or what types of ideas they were presenting. That's it for me. Thank you.
Um I don't have a list, because I came in on the tail end of this. I I've not received minutes and things of that nature, but there were several, maybe Sean can provide it at a later time, but there were several different uh community organizations from different uh aspects of uh of the communities, you know, be it, uh you know, um parishes, reverens, uh dance studios, all types of organizations.
If, and if I could put a a little bit of a finer point on it, it's, you know, some of those organizations, many of them are in that coalition, um but there are other stakeholders um that are, there are some factions involved, and and people who felt that the coalition and some of the um initiative that the coalition has taken has um made them felt, feel left out. So there are, there are organizations that are in the coalition that want to build sort of programming on on the site. And then there are people who feel that programming would be um not the right way to to honor um the hallowed ground that is there. Um which is why I think that any task force that is formed by the board, I've spoken with Joanne about this, really does have to emphasize that it's a process-oriented um um task force in order to facilitate not only the um community members that have the wherewithal to be organized and take initiative, but those who still feel marginalized um even by that group, um so that we're getting the the even broader swath of community input than the one that's done very, a very, very good job, a laudable job at organizing itself.
Um thank you, Sean. Um Dwayne Joseph, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh good evening again. Uh just for for me and maybe for the sake of of some of the others, procedurally, are we um looking to motion or vote on creating the task force, or are we looking to survey the board and whether or not the task force is a, is an idea we want to pursue?
Um so right now, um we're having a discussion, so there'll be no vote or recommendation, but I want to see what the support is in this committee. Um this committee is revolves around um the arts and will be expanding to, if I'm not mistaken, community environment, uh cultural affairs, economic development. Um so I'm looking for the board members that are, you know, on the committee and that are in attendance here to just give me feedback. I've heard feedback from Gail about her husbandancy, um and I heard that echoed by Nina. Um I heard Glenn's position, and so I I just, you know, this was a good place to sort of start talking about the task force. Um if people aren't ready, I can talk about it at the general meeting as an idea uh and get feedback then, um and then we could revisit it in February. So um Dwayne, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. If I just may quickly add, uh I didn't hear anybody mention this uh except for Gail, but I think before we speak to mayor, borough president, and all those folks, we definitely should have uh input from our incoming city council member.
I was gonna ask if if we had 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 um any commution uh communication yet with the new city council person as well. I think that would be a good place to start, and and then we can move forward. I think that what uh you are recommending is an excellent idea um for us to do it. So I don't, I do not want anyone to feel that I'm against it, because I I think it's, it is necessary. It's just that how we move forward on it.
I I totally understand, and I think um we, so I know that Sean had a meeting very, very early on with uh the the um new council member. Um but since then, I don't think we've had conversations, but it is only day four of the year.
Um to be clear, I had a conversation with candidate Rita Joseph, not, not not since the uh, not since the election, though.
Right. Um so I, so if I, if there is no other input from the committee uh and other members attending this meeting, then I'll just put it out there as an idea um at our general meeting um for discussion. And then we'll wait to um perhaps hear from uh our council member and um representatives from the borough president's office. I'm not sure if we're gonna hear from the mayor so soon. How does that sound to everyone?
Sounds good to me.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Sounds like a great idea. So so will Sean reach out before we uh hear back?
I I'll reach out to EDC as per Alvin's suggestion. I'll reach out to HPD and see whether or not they've done the updated community report and um and I'll reach out to to um Councilmember Joseph to see if we can have a conversation even before Monday's meeting. Um and if not, just to 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 get that ball rolling.
Thanks, Sean.
Uh just, I can't raise my hand. Uh it's Joel. I just want to say one thing. Um to some extent, I would, I would hope, I would think that somebody involved with that property has reached as realized that they don't have to, to some extent, reinvent the wheel. You know, there've been other grave, uh graves that have been, you know, that we've, that they've gone through the process of 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 figuring out what to do with property. I remember Lower Manhattan, the courthouse uh by Broadway and whatever it is, one block north of Chambers, you know, there was a burial ground there, and uh so, you know, there've been other people who've gone.
That, that has definitely been in the mix of all of the conversations, referring to it, to it having been done in other parts of the city and bringing in people who um have the experience for sure. And it's city property. It's just, mind you, it's public property.
Well, that's it for me. Um and thank you again to the co-chairs for allowing me to take up a bit of your agenda to discuss this. And so it sounds like we have a good plan for next week and and how to introduce the idea into the board, and I thank um everyone here for their valuable comments. Um thanks. Thank you, co-chairs.
Thanks, Joanne. And and at this point, I'll uh turn it over to Carl to uh to hit other business if there are, if there is any.
Carl, you're muted.
Can't, can't hear you, Carl. Carl, you're.
All right, just kidding. Um mic check. Can people hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, 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 great. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Um so, yes, we do have other business, and so um we do have Lori Davidson, and she is a community resident and also um a member of the Friends of Cortellou Library, and so Lori, um let's say I'll give you about two minutes just to, you know, briefly speak about the work that you are doing with the Friends of um Cortellou Library and um, you know, the BQ incubator project in general.
Thank you. Great to meet all of you. Thank you. This is my first community board meeting, and I'm really grateful to have the time. Um I am uh with the Cortellou Friends of the Library and, which I was a founding member of and been working with for ten years. Um also, uh you know, lifelong, Miss Parker. Um so um we at the Cortellou Library, I applied for the Brooklyn Incubator Grant, which is a ten thousand dollar grant that um is given to community partners with, in in conjunction with um staff at the library to propose innovative projects um for the library and the community. Um so this is a very exciting process. We won one for Cortellou Library, and the project that um my proposal was um a project to really increase um the way that the library reflects the community that it serves, right? And so the proposal consists of um having a series of five concerts, each highlighting a culture in the community um that reflects the community with bilingual storytime, food, um the music, arts and crafts, and then through each of these um events, we would recruit uh cultural ambassadors that would be advisors to the library to um have an ongoing way to have um the library to make that connection between the the community and the library, so that they could give advice both on the um the collection and the events and the programming of the library. So the um the cultures that are being highlighted at the five events are um Haitian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, um Mexican, and um Nepali. So we're doing these events, and you know, it's not every every culture of the community, because our cul- our community is so, so diverse, but we have data from, you know, the um patrons of the library and um and wanted to at least make a start, and perhaps we can bring in more folks after. Um so um what I wanted to share, I wanted to share this with you to see if we, if there were folks that wanted to work on these, because we think an important component of the proposal was that each of the events, um uh the people who work on it and um and design it be of the communities as well. So I wanted to put that out there. I know we have a a beautiful diversity here in this um community board. Um and would love if people could share with me whether you yourself want to be involved or have uh recommendations of folks that would like to be involved. Artists, uh storytellers, um that you would want to recommend as as ideas for it. All ideas I would be happy to have, so I can put my email in the chat, and please reach out, and I'd love to answer any questions.
Great, Lori, it's Sean Campbell. We'll make sure that we um uh keep your email and get the word out to any uh likely participants, like, you know, maybe Shahid Khan or Waqil Ahmad. Um and then um Carl or Greg will also report this out at the full board meeting, or you can come back Monday night and re-announce this to the broader um uh audience or assembly at the board meeting, um just to to get it out even further. But it's great, and thank, thank you for your service to to that library. It's a, it's such a gem and the community.
Thank you. I know Shahid from previous work, so hi.
Awesome. So thank you very much, Lori, for sharing, you know, the update regarding the goal of the project for which you and your group won the money, and also the, you know, idea of the incubator in general and exactly what Sean said. Um, you know, we can figure out the best way you'd like to do this on Monday, either I, on Monday, when I give the recap for the group, I can repeat this, or during um the public comment period, you know, you could register and then give the same update to a larger audience, you know, than this one that you did here.
That's great. Thank you so much, Carl.
No problem. Thank you for joining us. And so that's it that I have co-chair in terms of um other business.
Okay, I think that concludes our agenda for this evening then. Um so I think at this point, we can uh, we can close.
All right then. So everybody else, have a good night, stay safe, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you all.
Good night and Happy New Year, everyone.
Good night and Happy New Year.
Good night and Happy New Year.
Good night and Happy New Year. Good night.
Night, everyone.